Good evening, everybody. I'll talk slow if you're okay. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Wednesday, June 6th, 2012 Reno City Planning Commission meeting. If I could get everybody to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have roll call, please?
Kevin Weiskie.
Here.
Dennis Romeo, absent. Doug Kaufman, absent. Patty Egan.
Here.
Buzz Harris.
Here.
Dagny Stapleton, absent. Jason Wusley.
Here.
Thank you. Item number three on our agenda is public comment. This item is for either general public comment or for public comment on an action item. If commenting on an action item, please place the agenda item number on your request to speak form. And requests to speak forums, if you don't have them or you're not familiar with our process, are over here to my right, to your left, and if you have not filled one out, please do, if you wish to speak tonight or wish to, if you do not wish to speak but you wish to leave comments behind in favor or opposition to anything we're going to do this evening. With that, I will open public comment, and I will ask for any requests to speak forums. Do we have any at this time?
No.
Okay. I know we have Fred who would like to speak for a few minutes. Fred, if you will, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll actually keep it within the three-minute timeframe here. I just wanted to say hello and introduce myself. My name is Fred Ternier. I'm the new Community Development Director for the City of Reno. I'm very excited to be back at the city. I did spend some time here before during 2003 through 2005 during one of the biggest booms the city has ever seen. It was very exciting times, and I know that we have challenging times now. And we also have opportunities here at the city. So I look forward to working with my managers, especially Claudia as our planning manager. Looking forward to working with the Planning Commission, our HRC, and our other boards and commissions on furthering the goals of the city. And I'm very excited to be here. And again, my door is always open. I have met some of you before. Others, I haven't met too much, but I look forward to getting to know you and learning more about the Planning Commission and some of the goals that have been worked on in the past couple of years. So I'd just like to say thank you and introduce myself.
Fred, thank you very much. And as I have said privately to you, and I'll say it publicly, welcome back. Truly an asset to have you back with the City of Reno. We worked, all worked well with you at different levels before, and good to have you back.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to speak on this public comment agenda item? Here and seeing none, I will close public comment. And next on our agenda is approval of the meeting minutes of May 2nd, 2012. Are there any corrections to the meeting minutes? No? Motion? Commissioner Wusley?
Move to approve, please.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Harris?
I will second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. City Council Liaison Reports? No? Okay. Next on our agenda this evening is an RTC Regional Transportation Plan Update presentation. If our presenter will come forward, please, and introduce herself.
Thank you very much. I'm Amy Cummings, the Director of Planning at RTC. And... Have a couple of maps that might be easier to read on a board than on the screen. I appreciate you letting me come and talk to you about the Regional Transportation Plan today. And this is a process that we started last fall. It is a very community-based approach that we're trying to take. And the purpose of the long-range plan is to look at a comprehensive transportation needs for our region for all modes of transportation. And we're taking a long view, looking at a 2035 horizon year. And in this particular plan update, we're trying to emphasize how we better connect transportation and land use planning as well as economic development planning. And we have been working with various community groups and making presentations throughout the region. And one of our earliest items was to develop the guiding principles and goals for the RTP, and that was done last fall and through December. Right now, we're in a phase where we're developing the alternatives, and we're seeking suggestions for projects and programs and services that we should consider in the plan. And our next phase will be doing the quantitative analysis on those projects with our travel demand model and the financial modeling. And we hope to be finished in the fall and take a draft plan to our board in November. This shows you the guiding principles that were identified with our community working group and through a workshop process that we went through. And these are the overarching themes that you'll be seeing throughout the document: Goals of Safe and Healthy Communities, Economic Development, Sustainability, and Increased Travel Choices. Of course, safety is an important part of all of our projects. We're partners with Endot and Zero Fatalities, and this is going to be an important thing that we look at for each of the projects in the plan. We're also looking at new ways to promote safety for kids walking to school through working with the school district and also the health district to identify ways to provide active transportation, such as better sidewalks and bicycle routes. We've been working with the city on economic development planning to see what transportation can do to help implement some of the city's goals for economic development, in particular through our corridor studies, through an analysis of freight and employment areas, and partnership with EDON. And this is... Where do I have the map here? As we've been going out to the community... One of the key issues that's been raised to us is that there are a lot of neighborhoods where people feel isolated and cut off, and they don't have the level of mobility choices that they would like in their neighborhoods. And that's represented by the green circles on this map, some of our outlying suburban areas. And the key request that we've had to look at throughout this public process is increased transit service with a particular focus on service for senior citizens and people with disabilities in those outlying areas. And as well as additional service on some of our roads like Pyramid Way, McCarran Loop, and Longley Boulevard, and down to the employment areas in South Meadows. And this map also shows you the color coding of the lines is the ridership on the transit route. So the red lines signify our routes with the highest transit ridership, which of course are Virginia Street, Fourth Prater, those routes. We've also asked people what their vision is for rapid service and what they would like that to look like 20 years from now. And the key corridors that people have identified are building on the strong core we have on Virginia Street, which now goes from Fourth Street Station to Meadowwood Mall. To extend that, our next phase that we're already working on is to get service up to UNR. But a future extension could be down to Sierra Summit or the Redfield Campus down at the south end of Virginia Street, as well as east onto Fourth Street and Prater Way out to Legends. So those are the two primary corridors that we're going to be looking at for the rapid. We're also looking at complete streets, and this ties back to safety. We know that in areas where we can narrow travel lanes and slow cars down, we have fewer crashes and they're less severe. And it also gives us an opportunity to add bicycle lanes and enhance sidewalks. So we're looking in a comprehensive way at what a complete street strategy could look like for our region. And there are a lot of ways people can participate. Our starting point is our 2008 Regional Transportation Plan. We're going to be reevaluating all those projects. We're also going to incorporate projects from the corridor studies we're working on. We have two working groups: an agency working group with all our state, local, federal partners, and also a community working group of volunteers who are meeting with us monthly to identify some of these issues. We're also having a series of roundtables, which we've had one set, and we're going to have a follow-up later in the summer, one focusing on senior ADA issues and one on youth transportation issues, as well as economic development and safety. And we also have a smartphone app, so we're encouraging people to search for Your Wash O RTP, and they can send us suggestions or pictures or audio clips of any particular transportation project that they'd like us to look at in the plan. And finally, we are going to have a joint meeting next week between the RTC Board and the Regional Planning Governing Board, and we're hoping that they will set us forward to move forward with the consensus forecast, the 2012 consensus forecast, which TMRPA has allocated out to the traffic analysis zone level in partnership with cities. And that's going to be the starting, or the final piece we need to complete our travel demand model and to start the analysis on all these projects. So that concludes my presentation, and I welcome any suggestions or comments.
Thank you, Amy. Questions? Commissioners? Comments? Amy, I have one. On your complete-street program, do the bike, bicycle lanes and the restriping of streets, is that actually increasing or improving the level of service?
We believe that it does, and there's some certain thresholds where it works and where it doesn't work. And about 17,000 cars per day is the limit. If you have more cars than that, if you take out a travel lane, you're going to increase congestion. But on some of our roadways with less than 17,000, we could remove that travel lane, and operationally, it doesn't have adverse impacts. Although, there are some issues with signal timing. We have to be really careful with our signal timing so that the intersections don't back up.
Okay. So where we see lanes being decreased and bicycle lanes added, you're saying that's actually improving the level of service on the street?
In many cases, it will, because when you have four lanes and no center turn lane, you'll have people stopping in that inside lane as they, you know, wait to turn left. And that's where you get a lot of crashes. So by taking out that and turning it into a center turn lane, you get those turners out of the flow of traffic, so you don't lose much capacity, and you keep people moving more smoothly in the remaining lane.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions, thank you very much for the update, and look forward to seeing you come back maybe in six months to a year and telling us how all this went.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening, item number seven, public hearings. We're going to make a little change in our agendized items this evening. Item number two, Midtown District, is being moved to the bottom of our agenda. It will become number four because we are waiting for one more planning commissioner to show up tonight who's running a little bit late, and we need a full quorum of five commissioners in order to have a vote on this. So if you're here from Midtown, stay with us. We're going to get through the rest of this agenda. We might have to take a break real quick and find out where Commissioner Romeo is in his travels and making his way here. So just kind of give you guys a heads up. Item number one on our agenda this evening is LDC 12-00046, Rosewood Wash Zone Change. The city's representative, Vern, it looks like you, will come forward. Explain your project, please.
Sharon, can you change the overhead?
Vern, before you get started, since it's a city application, I'm going to ask commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Wusley, we'll start with you.
I received several emails on this topic.
Thank you very much. As have I. Commissioner Harris?
I also received several emails on this issue.
Thank you. Commissioner Egan?
As have I.
Thank you very much. With that, Vern, it's all yours.
Good evening. Vern Close, Senior Planner. This is a request for a zoning map amendment from approximately 36 acres of SF9 and 2.71 acres of SF15 to 38.9 acres of open space. This property is located in an area bounded by Cassio Boulevard, Patadour Drive, San Simeon Court, and Papinjay Drive to the west, Sclary Drive to the south, and Sclary Drive and Olympic Circle to the east. And it's indicated on the map on the screen. A majority of the site was acquired by the city due to non-payment of taxes. The county took the property, and then the city, that was offered to the city. And as indicated in state law, for us to receive the property, we need to maintain it for open space or recreational purposes. So the majority of the site is owned by the city, the big piece there, and that's, again, going to open space. And then there are three other parcels to the north that are owned by a private party that also have the same characteristics as this site. They're in the Rosewood Wash Canyon and are appropriate for open space. Staff is recommending approval. We believe all the findings can be met. I did receive about 27 emails and phone calls. 24 of them were in favor and four had concerns. And one of the concerns was just clarifying that although the project is called Rosewood Wash Zone Change, per the open space and Greenways Plan, this area in here is the Rosewood Canyon and Rosewood Wash. And the Rosewood Wash section is this northern portion, which is not affected by this request. So that was just asked to be clarified so that, I mean, it's the same drainage way, it just has a different segment and a different name. Other concerns were related to who's going to maintain this property. The city is going to maintain it. Can ATVs drive up and down the open space? And according to park staff, that's prohibited on all city open space, and it will be signed as such. And then there were some concerns about the potential for temporary stockpiling, and that's allowed in any zone in the city, subject to meeting conditions. And those were about the comments that we had, so...
If I can just... If I can jump in. Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. The city will maintain the city-owned portion, the large parcel. The other parcels are owned by the Rays, who have requested to be included in this zone change. So we just included them in, since we're doing the same thing with the city property. And I just wanted to clarify that the city will be maintaining the city's property.
Very good. Thank you. Is that it, Vern?
That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't go far in case we have questions. With that, I will open public comment. I have several request to speak forums before me. Some are, some do not wish to make a statement, but in the case of Mr. and Mrs. John Bengston, they are in favor of but do not wish to speak. Jim Kitter has a statement attached, but Jim, I don't have any statement attached. And... Was there an attachment for that? Okay, I'll get back to that one. Mr. and Mrs. Bud Russell do not wish to make a statement. They are in favor of... Diana Foley, I believe it is, does not wish to make a statement but is in favor of. Lori Ray does not wish to make a statement but is in favor of. Mark Ray is in favor and would like to make a statement. Mark, if you will come forward, or you crossed out one, somebody crossed out one line and left the one open that you wanted to talk. So, welcome, Mark.
Mark Ray, 2802 Outlook Drive in Reno, and owner of the private party, the private parcels that are part of this zone change. We'd like to thank the city for making this application and allowing us to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Christopher Henry does not wish to make a statement but is in favor of. And I'm getting back to Mr. Kitter's comments. I will read them into the record. Adjacent to Rosewood Wash to the west and to the southwest are two other open spaces. The one on the west is held in trust for the city. If Rosewood Wash is rezoned as open space, what will the city do to minimize fire danger from cheat grass and brush in those areas? Vern, when we close public comment, if you will be prepared to answer that, I would appreciate it. That is all of the requests to speak forums I have. Is there anyone else here this evening who is here to speak on this agenda item who has not filled out a request to speak forum? Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions. Vern, if you would like to come forward first and address Mr. Kitter's concern?
That's regarding fire?
Yes.
Well, it's an open space area that would be maintained by the city, so if there's any maintenance that needs to be done related to fire, the Parks Department and/or the Fire Department would be doing those maintenance provisions or indicating that something needs to be done, probably from the Fire Department, that says, you know, we need to clean up this area. But at this point, it's the same as any other city-owned property. If there are maintenance issues or fire issues, they would be addressed either through the Parks or the Fire Department.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Wusley?
And just to piggyback on top of that topic, you know, with the city maintaining this area, is there any difference between going from city to county, besides the signs that you're going to post for ATV use like that? Is there any other differences between the two?
Actually, it's... There is no county-city interface with this property. It's all within the city. The Parks Department does have standard signs that they use for, you know, signing trails and no ATVs and that sort of stuff. I didn't get those specifics, but when I spoke to park staff this afternoon, he indicated that they would not allow ATVs, and they also would sign the area for that. At this point, I don't know that there is a, through, throughout the whole property, a designated path. There might be some volunteer paths in the area, but I don't think there's one that's set up. And once parks, you know, they can go in there and see what needs to be done as far as maintaining it and setting up trails and signs and those sorts of things.
Thank you. Sharon, for the record, would you please mark down that Commissioner Romeo stepped into the meeting at 6:20 PM? Thank you. Any further questions, commissioners? Motion? Discussion? Commissioner Wusley?
In the case of LDC 12-00046, Rosewood Wash Zone Change, based on the compliance with the Capitol findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance, and I can make the findings.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Egan?
Commissioner Egan, I can second and make the finding.
Thank you very much. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Go ahead and abstain.
Mr. Chairman, I'll abstain from that vote.
That's Commissioner Romeo abstaining. Thank you. Next on our agenda item is item number three, LDC 11-00050, Demone Ranch PUD Amendment. Claudia, if you will introduce yourself, please.
Good evening once again. Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. This is a, an amendment to the Demone Ranch PUD, and it covers a lot of issues. Nothing drastic. You're not going to see any large changes in development down there with these amendments, but a lot of cleanup issues and clarification. The changes are outlined on page two of your staff report. And briefly, within the handbook, there used to be two land use tables that conflicted with each other. We've converted that into one land use table so that we have one document to go to. Restricted gaming, as we all know, has always been an allowed use down there as an accessory. We have put that in. It was never listed in the handbook, so we've added that in. Some of the setback requirements have been reduced, but it gives Nevada Tri Partners the ability to increase some of those setbacks, a certain amount. It discourages the use of turf rather than encourages and encourages the use of zero-scape. Animated signs would be allowed with the approval of a special use permit in the commercial area. So in some instances where it's away from residential, it might be appropriate, not appropriate in others. So it would have to come to you through a special use permit process to get that approved. And it clarifies that billboards are not, are, billboards are prohibited within the Demone Ranch PUD. There was some confusion on the wording regarding the amendment process for deviations and variances and adjustments. So it changes, it clarifies that minor deviations are to be processed by the city, and adjustments can be done by the ALC. And those adjustments would be for architectural elements, fencing and landscaping, so more of the appearance of things rather than the solid structural setbacks and building height, which is common within PUDs, to give them the ability to make the decisions on the detailed landscape and architectural elements of a project. There are a number of other small clarifications, typos, things like that, that we've cleaned out throughout the handbook, but those, that's the majority of the changes in the handbook, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
At this time, I will ask for any disclosures from any commissioners? No? Okay. With that, I will open public comment. Sharon, do we have any requests to speak forums on this agenda item?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Is there anyone here this evening who has not filled out a request to speak forum who would like to come forward? And Perry, if you would, you know the routine. After you get done speaking, if you would please fill out a form, I would appreciate it. You all have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. I, my name is Perry DiLoreto. I'm the managing partner of Nevada Tri Partners. I'm simply here to answer any questions. Staff has worked very long and hard with the city attorney's office to try and get the language just right, and I think we got it this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay close in case we have questions. Anyone else here this evening who wishes to speak on this agenda item who has not filled out a request to speak forum? Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions or discussion. I have a question for Claudia, please. Claudia, on page two of your staff report, under Analysis, fourth paragraph, it reads animated signs are proposed to be allowed with the approval of a special use permit and clarifies that billboards are prohibited. When we say animated signs, do those include videos?
Animated could include video.
Okay. And isn't that something that we're, we, I should say, isn't that something that staff is working on revising our onsite signage for right now? Are we going to minim, are you going to be proposing to minimize or eliminate video signs? Should we add something now to say no video?
We are looking at, we will be looking at that shortly, citywide. Again, this is a PUD, so it's going to be specific to that area, and everything will come through a special use permit. So you would be able to condition it when each project comes through. I don't know if we want to limit it right now, but I think we would just, we would look at it on a case-by-case basis to, and see if it's appropriate in certain areas and condition it if we do not feel it's appropriate.
Okay.
That is a condition that you could place on a project very easily.
Okay. And is Tri Partners in agreement with that, waiting for each individual to come through under a special use permit to be reviewed? Or should we, yes, I'm, Mr. DiLoreto?
I believe they are.
Step up to the microphone, then I will not propose to add the additional verbiage.
Right. Yeah. We understand that each sign will come through for a special use permit, so the decision really comes back to you. It's not our decision at that point.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Claudia.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Romeo?
Since the city's the applicant in this, it says Condition A, it has, this been worked out with the affected people down there?
Yes. Condition one would be up to the city to get it through the process in time and have it recorded. As the applicant.
Should it read Condition one, not Condition A?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The proposed motion says Condition A. Should that read Condition one?
Oh, yes. Thank you for catching that.
And Perry, is that, are you in, are you in agreement with that, the condition that's on the staff report?
I'm sorry, Dennis. I'm not, I didn't quite hear that.
There's a Condition one on the staff report?
We're totally happy with the staff report on...
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Comments? Discussion? Motion? Commissioner? Commissioner Egan?
Based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend the City Council approve the amendment to the design guidelines subject to Condition A as written below. And I'll clarify, in the case LDC 11-00050, Demone Ranch PUD Amendment, I can make the finding.
And I will second... Do I have a second?
I will second that. I can also make the findings.
Commissioner Romeo, thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. DiLoreto. Thank you, Claudia. Next on our agenda this evening, item number four, TXT 12-00010, Amendment of the Duration of Subdivision Extension Agreements. Mr. Goll, welcome.
Good evening. For the record, Bill Goll, Senior Civil Engineer. Before you, it's a text amendment to extend the timeframe for subdivision extension agreements from seven years to 10 years. Additionally, in the original request, we had added a subsection D, which would provide an expiration date of all subdivision extension agreements. We tied that to the expiration date that the 2009 Nevada Legislature had set for their extended timeframes for the filing of final maps. Following advertisement of this, we found out, were notified that the 2011 Legislature subsequently deleted that expiration date. So the final map approval periods are still at the four years and with two for their extended timeframes. We originally discussed that with legal, and we decided that a potential expiration date was June 30th of 2014. I provided a memo to that effect for subsection D for you today. Immediately prior to the meeting starting, I did further discussions with legal. We would prefer to simply delete subsection D. So the only request we are asking for at this point, as far as the text amendment, would be in subsection C, which is the extension from seven years to 10 years. If in the future, staff decides that expiration date or sunset date is appropriate, we will bring it back at that time. I can make all the findings, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. With that, I will open public comment. Sharon, do we have any requests to speak for them?
No, we do not.
Okay. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak on this agenda item who has not filled out a request to speak for them? Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council... commission, excuse me, for questions, comments, discussion, motion? Commissioner Romeo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the case of TXT 12-00010, based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the text amendment by ordinance with the deletion of subsection D. I can make the findings.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Wusley?
I second that, and I can make the findings.
Thank you very much. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, now we have a full quorum, and we will go back to item number two on our agenda, which is LDC 12-00033, Midtown District. If the applicant's representative will introduce herself.
Jody Royal Goodwin, Housing and Neighborhood Development Administrator for the City of Reno. And I'm here regarding the proposed master plan amendment to establish the Midtown District within the South Virginia Street Transit Area Development Corridor. Actually, I've gotten lots of practice saying that in the past two weeks. So anyways, the proposal is to create the district within the South Virginia Street Todd, and it's generally bounded by California, Holcombe, Regency and Humboldt. The idea of the master plan amendment was born or directed following the March 1 Town Hall meeting where the neighborhood residents and merchants were present. And the idea is to create, to maintain the residential character as well as then support the ongoing growth of the commercial sector. It actually identifies a residential section and a commercial section. I don't like this. So when I point wrong, I'm sorry. That would lead to some text amendments that allow specific zoning and planning processes for the Midtown District to ensure that its historical and architectural character are maintained. We've had a number of neighborhood meetings up to and including last night. You have a memo before you that summarizes the comments received both at last night's neighborhood meeting and the public comment, or the comment that I've received verbally and through email since the public notices went out. Generally, everybody is in favor of the adoption of the Midtown District amendment, but there are concerns about the overall boundaries of the Todd, but they don't want to leave any sections out. That was kind of the basic outfall from last night. And then we'll continue to work out, if it's adopted, on parking issues in the area and improving the pedestrian amenities. The other thing that came out of last night, you'll see in your memo, is there was a request to add a fifth consideration related to what the characteristics and the next steps should kind of be for the amendment, and that is to add number five and its neighborhood characteristics. And do you want me to read it? Is that a yes? "The district incorporates many smaller buildings, many with architectural and/or historical significance. Residents want to preserve the historic character of the area and want to ensure this is considered for future development within the area. This can be accomplished through the adoption of design standards or guidelines that reflect and enhance the characteristics of the neighborhood through compatible rehabilitation and development, providing a balanced environment that incorporates the historical character, commercial and residential, and can create an attractive environment that will encourage pedestrian traffic and enhance beautification."
Thank you.
And I'm not really sure what else you need to know.
Okay. If that's it, we'll open it up to public comment and go through discussion. And if you'll stay close for questions, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you. With that, I will open public comment. Sharon, I have four requests to speak for them. That's all we have at this time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. First one is Lori Ray, who does not wish to make a statement but is in favor of. Trey Benzley, I believe it is, is in favor of, does not wish to make a statement. Tom Scoggan, did not check any boxes, whether he'd like to speak or not speak. Tom, please, if you'd come up to the microphone, the podium, you'll have three minutes, sir. Please state your name.
I'm Tom Scoggan. I have five houses in this area here. I was notified one time, and that was a couple of weeks ago by this, that there was going to be a meeting. I haven't attended any because I don't take the paper because they can't deliver it on time, so I dropped it. My phone doesn't even have a camera on it, so I don't know how to text or anything like that. But there's going to be a lot of people that aren't notified on this thing. What I got out of last night's meeting was they can put a four-story apartment house next to your house, and there won't be any problem and no parking. Is there anybody here that wants a four-story apartment house next to their dwelling? There's hundreds of houses involved here. I don't think anybody knows what's going on with this thing. And they also, we're going to allow businesses to be put in with no parking for the businesses. That's just going to put the problem... that's irresponsible, is going to put the problem on somebody else. I don't think people are aware of what they want to do here. And like I said, I just got my notice the other day. And everybody here that has a house is going to complain about this. I think they brought it to you premature. I don't think they worked out any of the problems yet, and it doesn't look like they're going to be for a pretty long time. Jody, she tried real hard, but she's only been here two weeks. You know, she says, "Well, let's just pass this and we'll take care of the problems later." Well, baloney, let's take care of them now. It shouldn't have been brought to you in this raw stage to approve or disapprove. I can't see how it's going to help me at all, and I got money in here. I have five houses here. If somebody put an apartment house next to my house, what do you think it's going to be worth? It's going to be worth deadly. And would you like that to happen to you? I don't think you would. And I think they need to send out these notices to property owners instead of putting a notice on the paper or texting somebody. I don't know how to do that. And most people there are older in that area. I don't see how they can keep going with this thing. They completely disregarded the Plumas Plan, which a lot of city hours and a lot of resident time was put in. If this goes through, the Plumas Plan is in the toilet. Well, that's disrespectful to all the people that put hours and days in working on the Plumas Plan. The zoning is completely out the door. It's not really fair to the owners that made a business there that have parking. You're going to let somebody come in and put in a shop with no parking? We've got plenty of problems there, right there. It's not fair to anybody, except for the few people that want to put an office in with no parking. I've got 16 seconds left. I'll let you... You want to ask a question or anything?
Then we'll get back to you if we have a question for you, sir. Thank you, Tom. Next is Janice Rosell, does not wish to make a statement, is in opposition. I am in opposition of the Midtown District, is her comment. Casey Christensen would like to make a statement in favor of. Casey?
Hi, my name is Casey Christensen. I'm from Soup Restaurant and Creme Cafe, which is located in the SV Todd at the moment. And I just wanted to take a moment maybe to explain to you and explain to everyone else what the hope...
Sharon, can we get the clock running, please? Keep going, Casey.
Sorry. I just wanted to take a moment and explain to everyone what is going on in this area at the moment. We are part of an SV Todd, which means we run from California... or, excuse me, where California and Virginia run all the way down to Moana at the moment. At the moment, there are plans set within this area that people can build. What our goal is to make it so they can't build. I think you might have been a little bit confused at the meeting last night. Maybe you can take a moment, and she can explain a little better. And I think there was some confusion maybe explaining what the goal of making Midtown District is. It's that we can have a little more influence of not allowing these multifamily structures to be built, that we have lower density. I can understand the parking situation. Believe me, I know parking is a problem in the area. But by creating this district, it will allow us to have more control because we're a smaller, more unified district as far as not allowing these multifamily complexes right next to your bungalow. I just... I am in favor of it. I think it will allow us to grow in a smarter way because it's not encompassing such a large area. It allows people that live in a smaller district to have a little more control in what's going on in their district. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, those are all of the requests to speak for them that I have. Is there anyone else here this evening who wishes to speak on this agenda item who has not filled out a request to speak for them? Yes, sir. If you will come forward, introduce yourself, and then step over to Sharon and fill out a form, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Jason Irvine, 860 South Center. I own a home there on South Center Street. I purchased the home in 2007, and it was a much smaller residential neighborhood at that time. And since then, we've had a salon across the street that's opened, and I don't believe they have any of their own parking. We've had a lime spa open up, and as well, they don't have their own parking. And then now, almost to be completed is a large brewery restaurant that's going to be completed on Taylor and South Center. And I believe they have a small parking lot, but I'm not exactly sure how big it is. But I understand that they have some 300 seats, or they can feed 300 people. And it's already impacted to the point where no one can find any spots to park on South Center. And so I'm gravely concerned about the parking impaction and the impaction in the area with this... When this restaurant opens, it's going to be a mayhem. And I just wanted to, you know, mention that, and that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could get you to please come over and fill out that form. Yes, sir. If you would do the same, introduce yourself, have your three minutes, and then fill the form out.
My name is Harry Parsons. I'm the managing partner of Pangborn Company, located 924 South Virginia. We own that small parking lot he was talking about that he thinks the brewery is going to use. By the way, parking is going to be a major problem around there. It is right now. I think Jim Barnes was a person who's been there. Our office has been there. We've been there since 1953. And we do have adequate parking. I think we're one of the very few businesses in that whole area who do have parking. But we are negotiating right now with the brewery whether they're going to be able to rent our parking lot or not for periods of time. Jim Barnes was talking last night. He owns Barnes on Taylor Street. He says he's got buildings that he's been renting out for years commercially. He's got 15 employees, and if they do the two-hour parking like everybody's talking about, his employees will not have a place to park. So I think you can't pass this. I understand, I'm all for the Midtown District. I think it's a wonderful idea. But I don't know that you can pass this with the problem of parking that you're going to have. It's there now, and it's going to get worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this agenda item under public comment? Hearing and seeing none, yes, sir. You almost didn't make it. Thank you.
My name is John Slusser. I live on Larue, just off of Virginia. And like this other gentleman, last night's meeting was the... You know, that was the first one I've been to because I got a little thing in the mail. And from what I understand, just to clarify, we're just setting the... What you will be doing here is just setting the boundaries for this Midtown and not doing anything about parking or commercial, what can be commercial and what can't be. That's what I just want to get clear of, that you're just setting the boundaries for this Midtown this evening. And we can discuss what can be commercial and what can't at a later date. Will the people that live in this Midtown have any input on that?
The answer to your questions so far are yes. But we're going to have Jody come up and address each one of them or another staff member so that everybody here understands exactly what's going on and what, possibly a timeframe that this is going to happen in. How's that?
That's better. I just want to... hopefully, there's nothing getting done here that we don't know about. Because the information we got last night was just to set the boundaries, and that was it for this meeting here this evening.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Okay, one last chance. Anybody else who has not filled out a request to speak for them, who has not raised their hand, who has not stood up? Going, going, gone. Okay, with that, I will open up questions for commissioners. Jody, maybe before we even start with our questions, because we're going to hit those questions in detail, maybe you would like to just kind of refresh, start over, very basic. What are we here for tonight? What are you proposing?
Yes, again, Jody Royal Goodwin for the record. This action establishes such a thing as the Midtown District within the South Virginia Street Todd. It establishes that there are boundaries to it that generally coincide with the Todd boundaries, except for that in this case it ends on the south side at Regency, whereas the Todd extends farther down. It enables, is the word I used last night, it enables the city to go back and do some zoning text amendments that would address some of the concerns that have been brought up by the residents and the commercial interest in the area to say that the density maybe... maybe there should be a different density limit for this area of the Todd compared to the balance of the Todd. Maybe there should be parking requirements, all of those things that can't be done for a sub-area unless a sub-area is identified within the Todd. And so that is kind of the message we were trying to get out last night, and that's what this action does, is it sets an area that can be looked at differently than the whole. Does that help?
I believe it does. Thank you. Questions, commissioners? Commissioner Wusley, we'll start with you.
A question for you, Jody. Looking at this boundary and dividing it up between commercial and a residential section?
Yes.
Can you go into a little more detail about how you came up with those boundaries and the thought behind that?
I actually don't know that I can, but I'll try. So the boundaries of the district primarily... of the district primarily, like I said, overlap with the boundaries of the Todd. And they were, and it was established, I believe, through a number of neighborhood meetings that have happened over the past year or so, that said that this is kind of where that area ends at, in the Regency area. The, the commercial versus residential, and Claudia may have to jump in here, but part of that was that at that town hall meeting, there was a question is what are those boundaries? And that was drawn actually by participants in the town hall, from the town hall meeting.
Okay, great. So there was involvement from the community-
Yes.
-in that.
As I said last night, is we're not, this isn't an action that the city is doing really to them. We've been asked to do this. And so we're taking their lead on what is the defining, what are the defining pieces of it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Egan? No?
I was just gonna see if Claudia could clarify. So that is correct. We're basically looking at the same east-west boundaries of the Todd, and that's why those neighborhoods are established on that map the way that they are?
Correct, correct. And to the west is the Plumas Neighborhood, and to the east is the Wells Avenue Neighborhood. So a lot of people were looking at those boundaries to make it wider or narrower. But it's, it's, that's where it is. It's kind of squeezed in between, between the two existing neighborhood plans. That's where the existing Todd is. And Jody was correct in that the boundary, the internal boundary dividing the residential from the commercial was established at the town hall meeting. We had large maps up here, and people came and actually drew it on there. So we went with, with the, with the thoughts from the people that participated. And that was a very well attended. It was this room, standing room only. It was a, it was a very well-attended town hall meeting.
Thanks. Commissioner Harris?
Yeah, with the, the neighborhood meetings that you've had and the town hall meetings, do you feel that there was a pretty good understanding that this is a transit-oriented district? And hearing the discussions of, of parking and those kinds of things, that that was fairly well described and clearly understood?
I, I think that there was a lot of confusion. And so at last night's meeting, we had about 50 people there. And there were, was a wide range of understanding of what, that they were in a Todd or even that a Todd existed, or what that meant. So we did spend quite a bit of time going over what a Todd was, and, and that that's how the boundaries were defined. It wasn't that we reached up into thin air and, you know, some map god said this is where the lines will be. So there's a wide array. And what I told everybody last night is that we'll continue to have meetings. I mean, we are working, the city is working on the parking issue within the district. And so that issue, going ahead and starting to talk about what the text amendments are, or the potential for what those are, so that we can have a more lengthy conversation and kind of bring everybody up to speed. I've, you know, I've talked to probably 100 people in the past two weeks between last night and the phone calls. So that, that understanding, I would say, is minimal in terms of what it does. I don't know if they weren't there in 2007 when it was adopted, or life was just happening and, you know, nobody paid attention, or it, it's kind of faded away because there hasn't been any real impact, you know, in terms of development. But we continue to work on it. And, and I keep telling everybody to call me if they have questions. And so.
Commissioner Harris?
Just as a follow-up to, to that, I mean, understanding the, the significant amount of changes that have taken place with the bus rapid transit stations, and the significantly larger, longer, heavier buses, with that, I mean, it kind of identifies a lot of things that are taking place on Virginia Street. So I don't know if, was RTC a part of the town hall meeting?
RTC was at the town hall meeting. I do believe Amy was there.
I think she was.
She wasn't a part of last night's meeting, though.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Romeo? No? Okay.
I have a question. Claudia, see if you will, can you answer this one for us, please? It's my understanding that the development of this Midtown District is a series of steps. And this is the first step that we need to approve and move forward on, so that then we can go back and the Midtown District can have specific ordinances, guidelines, development standards, many different things, in order to resolve issues like parking, design, where commercial is going to be allowed, where residential is going to be allowed. Am I correct in making that statement?
That's correct. We, we look at the master plan amendment, the master plan and the zoning separately. The master plan sets the, the goals and policies and the, the direction of where we want to go. You don't want to amend your master plan and your zoning at the same time. It's, it's, it's one big swoop. You want to take the time and look at the boundaries and say, this is the area that needs additional focus. And whether, for any reason, depending on, you know, matter where in the city. Here, it's parking, architecture, density, circulation are all issues in this area. So that's, we identify the boundaries. This is the area that we want to look at. And these are the, these are the points that we want to address. And that's goals and policies that are set forward through the master plan. The next step will be the text amendment. So we'll move forward, and potentially a zoning map amendment as well. So we'll move forward and work with the community to address each of those issues in detail. So how are we gonna address the parking? Do we need to change what the parking requirements are at this time? Do we need to address, how do we address density in the area? Do we reduce the amount of density? Do we cap the density? Do we require specific lot sizes or whatever the issues may be? But the zoning is where you go into the details and, and each element. And you would change that in the zoning code to direct specifically how development will move forward. Right now, we're just at that goal-setting vision step. And this will go through, from here, if, if approved, it will go to City Council and then on to regional planning to amend our, to amend our master plan. After that, we will come back and look at the details of the zoning code, which will go through Planning Commission and City Council.
Okay, so it's, it's my understanding then, and then I'm, and I'm restating this so that you, the general public, also, who may not be familiar with, with what this process is, understands a little better of the process. What we're doing this evening is establishing the boundaries. We are amending the master plan as it is today, so that in the very near future, because this is going to continue to progress, we can then look at zoning amendments and text amendments that will deal with the heights of buildings, the number of stories of a building, the parking issues, the hours of operation, street lighting, street parking, all of the different things. And, and I have not hit them all, people, believe me. There's a much larger picture here. But in the, in the following steps after this approval, then that's when these additional amendments are made. And-
That's correct.
Thank you, Claudia, for putting a period to that for me. So that's why this evening, we're taking the first step, which is getting the ball rolling with this master plan amendment. And you will all need to talk with your neighbors and be advised of when upcoming meetings are, and stay involved in it, provided that it's approved this evening, and that City Council approves it, and regional planning approves it as it's been presented this evening. So-
And every step, the community will be post, will be noticed again. So when it goes to City Council, I think the card is blue. So you'll get a blue postcard when it goes to City Council. I don't believe, I'm not sure if regional notices theirs or not. When we do the text amendments, you will receive another yellow card that you received, like you received for tonight's meeting. You'll receive a yellow card when we go through the text amendment, and then another blue card when that goes to City Council. So you have at least three more postcards coming your way in the, in the near future.
Jody, I have a question for you. If some of our general public is not computer savvy, they, they, they don't get on and look at the City of Reno website to find out when upcoming meetings are, and they didn't receive a card, is there a group or a, a local businesses or whomever within the Midtown District that will be posting announcements, be providing information to the residents of the area? Has that been discussed?
There is a merchants' association that shares information with a fairly large listserv, and that has been one of the things I've been, as we've gone through this, and I've gotten all these calls, I've been trying to think about how we do outreach a little more in advance of maybe the, I think it's about two weeks, they get the, the postcard before that. I've started a list, so anybody who said they're interested, I can at least notify them directly in advance of that, when we're having meetings or when something major's happening. So trying to be proactive and making sure that everybody does get a fair chance to have input.
Okay. For those of you who are here this evening who have not signed up for a mailing or, or noticing, please see Jody after the meeting or after this agenda item. Tracy, if I can pick on you for a minute. Yes, you, aren't you a member of the, the Midtown Merchants' Association? Do you have a mailer or anything that goes out? If you would, please, to the
Hi, yes, Casey Christensen. We have a Midtown District, is what it's called. And so the Midtown District Association sends out a monthly newsletter to all of our members. And I'm sure that there's a way we can have more information on there if, as it's passed down from Jody or from others. And, and even if you, if there's other people that would like to be involved, they can sign up for that mailer as well.
Okay. I, I, I know nothing has been approved, no, no vote has been taken. But should it go forward, there are different people in the community to contact for additional information. That's why I'm going through this little dissertation of people standing up you can talk to this evening or, or down the road for additional information. Okay? Claudia?
We also post the site. There's, I think we put up four signs, I think, in the, in the district.
Yes, for this action. And actually, I did get calls, not from postcards, but from those funny-looking signs that are placed on vacant properties typically at each of the major corners of the action.
So, and then we do get quite a, quite a response from those. So those are out there, and we will continue to post those. I also have the hearings.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will ask for any further questions from commissioners? Discussion or motion? Commissioner Romeo?
Yeah, I have, I have a few comments. But getting this Midtown area out of the transit-oriented development is a big step forward, in my opinion. Neighborhood plans aren't something new. We've done these before here, and they are living, breathing things. They change. And at one time, the city considered all those things with a master plan amendment. But a court ruling several years back, Judge Perry, is that correct, Marilyn? Judge Perry ruled that we cannot even consider the, the components that were brought up here today. The master plan must stand or fall on its own merit. So what we are doing here today is making a master plan amendment. The residential component, the commercial components, and the standards, the floor area ratios, those will all come at a later time. I support this. Anytime neighborhoods want to get involved and control their own destiny and set their own rules, I believe that's the way it should be. If you live in that neighborhood, you work in that neighborhood, it's your neighborhood. We shouldn't be telling you how it should be. You should be telling us. So I'm gonna support this when it comes through. And I will, I will be seeing this many times in the future. We've all been through this when the zoning and stuff comes before us. That's, the devil is in the details. So pay close attention when those things happen.
Thank you, Commissioner Romeo. Anybody else wish to make comment? Motion? Commissioner Harris?
Based on compliance with the applicable considerations, I move to approve the amendments to the master plan by resolution, and recommend the same to the City Council, subject to conformance review by the Regional Planning Commission.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, and good luck on your next step. Okay, with that, we will continue on with our meeting on to item number eight, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. We didn't have a meeting. We have a meeting coming up next week.
I believe it's next week, yes. Next Wednesday.
So we will have an update in July. Staff announcements, Claudia, one through four?
Things I have written down here are, the electronic billboard ordinance is still in the works. We're having a meeting on Monday afternoon at 2:00 with the stakeholders. City of Nevada members and members from the off-premises sign industry have been invited to that. Group homes have been a hot topic at City Council lately. There have been, there's an existing group home over on Pass Drive with a proposed one coming in next to it. They are not licensed nor reviewed by the City of Reno. But we are working with the community to help address some of the issues in that area. I could go on and on, on group homes. But if you would like a presentation on that, to be caught up on that issue, we'd be happy to provide that in the future. Roboni can bring that forward. And then the non-conforming sign ordinance and the mobile classroom ordinance that you recommended approval of were both approved by City Council.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Commissioners, suggestions for future agenda items? I have one. It's not a recommendation for a future agenda item. It is a future agenda item to let all of you commissioners know. Next month, we will start our meeting off with elections for new chairman and vice chairman for the year 2012, 2013. They will, I will open the meeting, and I will be turning the gavel over, because I have filled two terms as, back-to-back as chairman. So we will be having elections next month. We did not have a quorum for the July 5th meeting, so it is being postponed to the July, Tuesday, July 10th, the following week. I hope that we have a full quorum at that meeting. We should. I hope we do.
And to piggyback on that, we have a workshop on July 25th.
Thank you.
Sure. I knew you were gonna say that next.
It's right there. Any other comments for future agenda items? Okay, next on our agenda this evening is public comment. This public comment item is to allow the public to provide general public comment, and not for comment on individual action items contained on this agenda. Sharon, do we have any requests to speak forums on this public comment? Is there anyone here this evening who has not spoken, who would like to speak on, under this public comment item? Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment and take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good month. See you next month.